Time is seven o'clock and we'll call to order the city council meeting for August the 8th, 2016. Roll call, please.
Mr. Jones.
Here.
Mrs. Keller. Mr. DeGenova.
Here.
Mr. Rohr. Mr. Hellinger.
Here.
Vice Mayor Shaffer. And Mayor Riggle.
Here. Ken Rohr will be a few minutes late and can I have a motion to excuse Vice Mayor Kent Shaffer and Ms. Keller?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. DeGenova.
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger.
Yes.
Mayor Riggle.
Yes.
And item two on the agenda is the invocation which tonight will be led by Joe DeGenova, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. If you'll all please stand.
As we prepare the next two weeks, especially with schools starting, have to remember our youth and the traffic and I know the police and the fire will be kept busy. And also in the preparation, ironing the week following.
Twenty-first.
The 21st. We don't have a meeting on the 23rd, but there's gonna be a lot of visitors in town and show them we expect and dignity and hopefully everything will go well on that. So you bow and pray now. Dear Lord, our heavenly Father, we thank you for this beautiful day and we thank you for the opportunity of gathering here in this council chambers to do your work and do the city's work. We ask, Lord, that you be with everyone here, everyone show each other with respect and dignity. We ask, Lord, that you be with our police and fire as they service the city in our most wanted times and the most difficult times this country has seen. We ask also that you pray for all of our servicemen and women, both overseas and in the country, and those overseas give them a speedy return home. And as we do business this evening, open up our minds and hearts that we can make the right and justice judicial decisions that we can for the betterment of the community, not for the betterment of any individual. We ask, Lord, that you be with us, guide us and direct us, and especially our young people, not now but also in the future. We ask these things in our Lord's name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. DeGenova.
Yes, ma'am.
Item five on the agenda is the approval of the motion summary, the regular meeting of council held July 25th, 2016. What is the wish of council?
Motion to approve the minutes submitted.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Hellinger and a second by Mr. Jones. I apologize, I'm tired. Roll call, please.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. DeGenova.
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger.
Yes.
Mayor Riggle.
Yes, motion carries. I just flew in, so just bear with me if I stumble a little bit tonight, okay? Item six on the agenda is the consent agenda. If you'll please read this into the record.
Item A, acceptance of the motion summary for the Shade Tree Commission meeting held June 28th, 2016. Item B, acceptance of the motion summary for the Planning Commission meeting held July 6th, 2016. Item C, established September 12th, 2016 at 7:30 PM as the date and time for public hearing and second reading of ordinance number 16-72, an ordinance approving a rezoning for Delaware Housing Corporation from B3 Community Business District to R6 Multifamily Residential District for London Town Apartments on approximately 0.88 acres, parcel number 419-122-01-006-000, and located at 300 Chelsea Street, and of ordinance number 16-73, an ordinance approving an amendment of the Comprehensive Plan for Delaware Housing Corporation on property designated as commercial on the future land use map to moderate density for London Town Apartments on approximately 0.88 acres, parcel number 419-122-01-006-000, and located at 300 Chelsea Street.
Thank you. What is the wish of council on the consent agenda?
I move for the adoption of the consent agenda as submitted.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. DeGenova, a second by Mr. Hellinger. Roll call, please.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. DeGenova.
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger.
Yes.
Mayor Riggle.
Yes, motion carries. And we're gonna throw a 7A in here. There should be a spot for public comments, so anybody that would like to come forward for anything that is not on tonight's agenda, if they'd like to raise their hand and come forward at this time. Okay, if you'd like to come forward, please.
Good evening. And for the record, if you'll please state your name and address, I'd appreciate it.
Yes. My name is Mark Butler, 407 Western Dreamer Drive, City of Delaware. May I start?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. I was before the city council a couple of weeks ago discussing, I believe, an important issue in our community, and that's the Confederate flag of America. There's a couple members of the community, when I say "community," I don't mean just black people, I mean the community in large, who have responded significantly by Facebook, by editorial feedback from the Delaware Gazette. It's pretty much a divided issue, and trust me, I do understand why it's divided. Number one understanding is that this flag represents some of our fellow citizens' heritage, and I'm not agree with the meaning of the flag. And I come here tonight after speaking briefly with Councilman Jones, is that I am asking city council to sponsor a resolution concerning the Confederate flag of America, far as being displayed here in the city of Delaware. I don't think I'm asking much, I'm not asking for a legal battle on the courts, I do understand that people have their First Amendment rights, but I think we're in a time in our history that we need to take a look at, along with the constitutional rights, but look at what we are accepting of, and we should not be afraid to comment on symbols that represent our history, our heritage. And I'm here, not, again, not representing just the black community, and most of you know that this flag historically has represented racism, slavery, segregation, and a terrorist group that calls themselves, still call themselves the KKK, Ku Klux Klan. So I'm gonna end my comments by saying, I believe the state of Ohio became a state in 1803. The city of Delaware was founded in 1808. In 1816, Delaware became incorporated, became a city. Now, 200 years to the day. As an African American, I'm facing government and expressing my displeasure over the Confederate flag of America. And having, no, having myself not experienced segregation, Jim Crow, but my foreparents have. And I think if I can get the support of the community leaders, I think this community can go forward with its values, which are good, with its goal for diversity, which is really good, and publicly denounce this flag in the city of Delaware. And with that, I end my comments.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else that would like to come forward at this time? Okay, we'll close the public hearing and we'll move on to committee reports. Oh, let the record show that Mr. Rohr is here, and the time is 7:10. Mr. Jones?
I have none, ma'am.
Okay. Mr. DeGenova?
The Hayes Memorial Committee met, and we met with the architect, we had some changes, and we're gonna meet again towards the end of the month and finalize that. And there were about 15, 20 people there at the meeting, and we're looking forward to having more people join, because it's gonna be at least a $400,000 project. But we'll have a schematic drawing, I guess, what do you call that?
Conceptual drawing.
Conceptual drawing on it. Probably it'll be presented to council in the next couple of meetings as to exactly where we're headed with that. And civil service was canceled again this month due to no action on that. That's all I have there.
Okay. Mr. Rohr?
I have nothing.
All right. Mr. Hellinger?
I have nothing.
All right. And I have nothing. And at this time, I'll ask Elaine to read eight through 10 into the record.
Ordinance number 16-57, an ordinance approving a rezoning amendment to the development plan for Pulte Homes for the communities at Glen Ross, section 11 through 22, consisting of 487 single-family lots on approximately 210.7 acres, zoned R2 PMU, one-family residential district with a planned mixed-use overlay district located south of Cheshire Road. Ordinance number 16-58, an ordinance approving an amendment to the preliminary development plan for Pulte Homes for the communities at Glen Ross, sections 11 through 22, consisting of 487 single-family lots on approximately 210.7 acres, zoned R2 PMU, one-family residential district with a planned mixed-use overlay district located south of Cheshire Road. Ordinance number 16-59, an ordinance approving an amendment to the preliminary subdivision plat for Pulte Homes for the communities at Glen Ross, sections 11 through 22, consisting of 487 single-family lots on approximately 210.7 acres, zoned R2 PMU, one-family residential district with a planned mixed-use overlay district located south of Cheshire Road.
Thank you. Lance?
Yes. At the direction of council from the last meeting, staff and the developer addressed the emergency access issue to this site. In red on here, just west of the roundabout on Cheshire Road is the proposed new access road to the subdivision, and it would access the condominium portion of the subdivision, which would be built first, so we'd always have to access to this site. This is an enlargement of the access area in yellow, it's 20 feet wide, it achieves compliance with the engineering, city engineering requirements and the emergency service requirements. Also, we addressed the issue about the extension of Winterborne Drive to Peach Blow Road. On the left is the city thoroughfare plan, which was adopted in 2004, on the right is an enlargement of the area, and in yellow is essentially the Glen Ross subdivision. The green line that goes across the yellow area is Cheshire Road. And in red is the alignment of a proposed thoroughfare that would extend from Cheshire Road south through the Glen Ross subdivision and south to the green line to the south, which is actually Peach Blow Road. So that's been in the plan since 2004, and that's what would occur when the property to the south is developed. And the dashed orange line to the south shows the extension of Winterborne Drive to Peach Blow Road. That's about a third of a mile. From Cheshire Road to Peach Blow Road, it's about a mile, so the remaining gap will be about a third of a mile. Planning Commission approved this case, the rezoning amendment with one condition, the amended preliminary development plan with two conditions, and the amended preliminary subdivision plat with 19 conditions. Be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Back to your second. Who owns the white area once you go across area?
It's the Girdon property.
Girdon property, and that doesn't have anything to do with the phases of any of the future development?
Not of this.
So we don't know when that'll ever be?
That's correct.
Okay.
I mean, there's been interest from time to time from those owners.
So we're back to square one. As far as the last conversation there, they were saying something about to the right of that, that there might be a entrance there, temporary entrance made?
Well, what they're proposing, and developer and staff agreed, was emergency access easement just west of the roundabout. It's actually, they own this flag lot that extends to Cheshire Road, about 100 feet wide, so they put about a 20-foot access road through that to connect to the condominium area on the site.
But still, once the entire area is built out, that could be five, 10 years, and there'd only be one entrance?
There'd be two. They'd have the main entrance and this emergency.
And that other entrance.
Correct.
John and Chief Fidgenowski, how do you feel about that?
Chief Donahue, Delaware Fire Department. We met concerning, directly right after the last city council member. We were very pleased with what has happened with this and what is being recommended and proposed before you, so we support this.
I thought originally you couldn't put it there because it was a retention pond?
Yeah, discussion with the engineers, they can potentially, they'll relocate that retention pond, and they'll be able to install it at that location.
And then when it's built, is it an asphalt access road or is it just gravel?
We'd have that discussion as we go through final development plan. We would ensure that it meets city engineering requirements and the fire department requirements.
Okay, so, because the concern is that it's not up to a standard, and if there's an emergency and cars can't get out through that access, it's certainly a purpose.
We'd ensure that it would, regardless of what it's constructed of.
And Councilman Jones, this will come back for a final, this is preliminary now.
This section will come back for a final development plan and final subdivision plat. We'll have those details worked out at that time.
Lance, can you point out where the roundabout's gonna be?
Roundabout, that is.
Over there.
Okay, that far over.
Pretty far.
Okay.
Is there any sunset provision on that emergency access, such that, let's say, when that's built out, does then that land get repurposed, or is that a permanent emergency access?
I guess we didn't address that. That's something we can have a conversation as we move forward. I believe the chief wants it until it goes to Peach Blow Road at a minimum, but I think at that time, we can be addressed at that time, determine if it's, what occurs in the future.
And that land up to Peach Blow, is that in the city or not?
No, it's not.
That's what I thought.
That's all within our sewer service area, so that's all just, I mean, it's probably just a matter of time.
It has to be annexed.
Yeah. And obviously, if it's annexed and it's developed, the requirement would be to continue that road down to Peach Blow Road and provide that connection. And if it didn't develop at some point, the city would be faced with the question, you know, do we want to continue it?
Right. Any other questions for Lance? Okay, what is the wish of council on ordinance 16-57?
There's no emergency there yet.
You've got a series of them here.
I know, but we'll start with number eight, which is 16-57.
Wish you could do this as an omnibus piece of legislation.
I move for the approval of 16-57. Second.
I have a motion by Mr. DeGenova, a second by Mr. Rohr. Roll call, please. Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. DeGenova.
Yes.
Mr. Rohr.
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger.
Yes.
Mayor Riggle.
Yes, motion carries. And item nine, which is ordinance 16-58.
I move for the adoption of 16-58 as submitted with all the conditions.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. DeGenova, a second by Mr. Rohr. Any further discussion? Roll call, please. Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. DeGenova.
Yes.
Mr. Rohr.
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger.
Yes.
Mayor Riggle.
Yes, motion carries. And item 10, which is ordinance 16-59.
Move for the adoption of 16-59 as submitted.
Second.
Motion by Mr. DeGenova, a second by Mr. Rohr. Roll call, please. Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. DeGenova.
Yes.
Mr. Rohr.
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger.
Yes.
Mayor Riggle.
Yes, motion carries. And thanks for your work, staff and Pulte Homes for working it out for us. Thank you very much. And item 11, whenever you get a chance, is ordinance 16-62. Elaine, if you'll please read this into the record.
Ordinance number 16-62, an ordinance approving a final development plan for a pool facility and recreation area for Pulte Homes for the communities at Glen Ross on approximately 22.7 acres, zoned R2 PMU, one-family residential district with a planned mixed-use overlay district and located north of Cheshire Road.
Thank you.
Yeah, this 22-acre site's located just north of the area that we discussed, north side of Cheshire Road. It's vacant farmland today. Give some history here. In August 2015, council approved amended preliminary development plan, preliminary subdivision plat for sections 6 through 10. This is actually section 7 of the development. The access to this site would be from the roundabout north on Eagle Walk Drive. The park, this is the recreation amenities for the communities at Glen Ross subdivision. This is the neighborhood park, if you will, for the entire, for that development. West of Eagle Walk Drive would be the pool with a large concrete deck, a pool house, a shelter, a pool shelter, a 57-space parking lot located north of the pool, a retention pond located north and west of the pool. On the east side of Eagle Walk Road would be a shelter house, a large tot lot, a 15-foot high sledding hill, a full-size basketball court, two volleyball courts, a large recreation field, and a 20-space parking lot with overflow parking in the grass area just east of the parking lot, and a detention basin along the railroad tracks. Elevations of the pool house and shelter house would be comprised of wood and stone with a pitched roof, a standing seam metal roof, and a coukla on top to emulate a barn structure. Planning Commission approved the final development plan with eight conditions. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
This will be maintained by the homeowner association?
That is correct. The pool would be private, maintained by homeowner association. The remainder of the park would be maintained by the homeowner association, but open to the public for our policy.
Lance, our package has nine conditions, not eight. Do you know if you took one out?
I'm not sure, I'm not sure you've listed the ordinance. Maybe there was one added.
Sorry, we're getting picky.
Yeah, you are correct, there are nine. I think, I think Planning Commission added a condition. I'm sorry for that.
That's okay.
Miscommunication.
That's all right. What is the wish of council, or first of all, anybody have any more questions for Lance?
Is this a first reading?
Yes.
What's your, I guess, Pulte can answer this, anticipation on construction of this immediately, or?
I defer to Pulte.
Steve Peck, 4900 Tuttle Crossing Boulevard, Dublin, Ohio. The plan is to get the pool constructed, at least the concrete in before winter, so that we, and then the full grand opening would be Memorial Day of '17.
'17.
Yep.
Thank you, Steve.
Any other questions for the applicant?
What's the HOA is which one? This will be the?
There's only one. All of Glen Ross is under one HOA.
And so until it's turned over, until it's fully built out, it's under the control of Pulte?
That's correct. Yep, we hold all the board positions.
So we'll need to work with, coordinate with you in terms of, if that park is public, with the exception of the pool, in terms of the shelter and rentals and things like that, are you guys gonna be handling that, do you think?
No, the HOA management company will handle that.
Okay, so we'll just wanna kind of coordinate with you guys on that with our parks department, if it's public, because it's gonna be public, it sounds like.
I think the way that your things are written is that the HOA owns and maintains, but it's available for public use. In terms of reserving space and stuff, I don't know how that.
We'll just have to figure that out.
I'm not sure how that works.
Okay.
The pool just open to residents now?
That's correct. They'll have a pass code. When they pay their dues, they get a key card, either a key fob or a pass, if it's unnumberized, but either way, they get through the HOA.
And I would imagine in time, they may decide, they can decide if they want to open that to the public, much like Wesleyan Woods has their community pool, but they've opened it up on a daily basis or so, where you can buy a membership, so that would be up to them ultimately, it sounds like.
That's correct. We would be out after we would turn that over, yeah.
What is the wish of council on that? Do you want to vote on it tonight or not?
It's a recommendation of mine.
Staff recommendation.
I moved to suspend the rules requiring three readings on 16-62.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Rohr, a second by Mr. DeGenova. Roll call, please. Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. DeGenova.
Yes.
Mr. Rohr.
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger.
Yes.
Mayor Riggle.
Yes.
Motion to approve ordinance 16-62.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Rohr, a second by Mr. DeGenova. Any further discussion? Roll call, please. Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. DeGenova.
Yes.
Mr. Rohr.
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger.
Yes.
Mayor Riggle.
Yes, motion carries. Thank you.
I'll just stay, in case there's further ones.
Okay. Elaine, if you'll please read 12 through 17. Don't give me that look.
Ordinance number 16-63, an ordinance approving a final development plan for Pulte Homes for the communities at Glen Ross, section 8, consisting of 34 single-family lots on approximately 10.967 acres, zoned R2 PMU, one-family residential district with a planned mixed-use overlay district and located on Eagle Walk Road, White Fawn Run, and Gray Owl Ordinance number 16-64, an ordinance approving a final subdivision plat for Pulte Homes for the communities at Glen Ross, section 8, consisting of 34 single-family lots on approximately 10.967 acres, zoned R2 PMU, one-family residential district with a planned mixed-use overlay district and located on Eagle Walk Road, White Fawn Run, and Gray Owl Ordinance number 16-65, an ordinance approving a final development plan for Pulte Homes for the communities at Glen Ross, section 9, consisting of 29 single-family lots on approximately 11.069 acres, zoned R2 PMU, one-family residential district with a planned mixed-use overlay district and located on Crickstone Drive and Silver Fox Way. Ordinance number 16-66, an ordinance approving a final subdivision plat for Pulte Homes for the communities at Glen Ross, section 9, consisting of 29 single-family lots on approximately 11.069 acres, zoned R2 PMU, one-family residential district with a planned mixed-use overlay district and located on Crickstone Drive and Silver Fox Way. Ordinance number 16-67, an ordinance approving a final development plan for Pulte Homes for the communities at Glen Ross, section 10, consisting of 34 single-family lots on approximately 10.234 acres, zoned R2 PMU, one-family residential district with a planned mixed-use overlay district and located on White Fawn Run and Gray Owl Drive. And, ordinance number 16-68, an ordinance approving a final subdivision plat for Pulte Homes for the communities at Glen Ross, section 10, consisting of 34 single-family lots on approximately 10.234 acres, zoned R2 PMU, one-family residential district with a planned mixed-use overlay district and located on White Fawn Run and Gray Owl Drive.
Good job.
The three aforementioned, these three sections are located just north of the aforementioned case we had with the parks, recreation parks. There's 97 lots in these three sections. The section in yellow is section 8, and it's accessed by Eagle Walk Drive from the roundabout on Cheshire Road. There's 34 single-family lots in this section. These lot sizes, house sizes and material are the typical communities at Glen Ross. Sizes, 65-foot minimum lots, 1,600 square foot ranch minimum, 1,800 square foot, two-story, and 40% of the front elevation would be natural materials. The section 9 is in green, which is 29 lots, and it's similar to the golf club at Glen Ross, lot size. Glen Ross, lot sizes, house size and material, where the lots would be a minimum 10,400 square feet, which would be minimum 80 foot width. 100% of the elevation would have to be natural materials, and the minimum house size would be 2,000 square feet. Section 10 is in blue, which contains 34 lots, and these would be the typical communities at Glen Ross, lots, house size and materials. This section doesn't have any park area, but the park area to the south addresses that issue. It's located within the Delaware South New Community Authority and the Cheshire North Tiff District. Planning Commission approved section eight, final development plan with two conditions, and the final subdivision plat with seven conditions. They approved the section nine, final development plan with two conditions, and the final subdivision plat with six conditions. Planning Commission approved section 10, final development plan with two conditions, and the final subdivision plat with eight conditions. Be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for Lance?
Lance, what the total amount of homes in there again?
Ninety-seven in these three sections.
Ninety-seven in each of the three sections?
Total. Total. I'm sorry. And this would, this would be the last sections of the area north of Cheshire Road. Section six and seven are under construction as we speak.
Any other questions for Lance?
Just, I have one for Steve. Are you in coherence with the conditions and have any questions on any of the?
No, we're fine with the conditions on this.
I assume, obviously, this, the demand is there, obviously, for you guys right now with the housing market being like this?
Yes, yep, yep. The plan is to try to get the yellow in yet this fall, and then the blue and green would likely be just summer to fall of next year. And then we would head south on the preliminary stuff, okay?
And those are still Olentangie School Districts, right?
That is correct.
And the 46 before that was Olentangie School District?
Correct.
Okay.
Does Pulte own the tri, the piece east of the tracks, the triangular, please? Do you own that?
We do not. That was sold at least 10 years ago.
Okay. Okay. No, one time, I thought it was sold.
It was part of the original rezoning, but I think the option expired.
Okay.
Okay. What is the wish of council on ordinance 16-63?
Motion to suspend the rules requiring three readings on 16-63.
Motion by Mr. Rohr, second by Mr. DeGenova. Roll call, please.
Mr. Jones?
Are these all first readings for all of these?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
What's the question, what's the question for the board again?
Suspending the rules on 16-65.
Mr. DeGenova?
Yes.
Mr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes.
So, motion to?
Motion to approve 16-63.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Rohr, second by Mr. DeGenova. Roll call, please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. DeGenova?
Yes.
Mr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Motion to suspend the rules requiring three readings on 16-64.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Rohr, second by Mr. DeGenova. Roll call, please.
Mr. Jones?
No.
Mr. DeGenova?
Yes.
Mr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes.
Motion to approve ordinance 16-64.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Rohr, second by Mr. DeGenova. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. DeGenova?
Yes.
Mr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes.
Motion to suspend the rules requiring three readings on ordinance 16-65.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Rohr, second by Mr. DeGenova. Roll call, please.
Mr. Jones?
No.
Mr. DeGenova?
Yes.
Mr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes.
Motion to approve ordinance 16-65.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Rohr, second by Mr. DeGenova. Any further discussion? Roll call, please. Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. DeGenova?
Yes.
Mr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Motion to suspend the rules requiring three readings on ordinance number 16-66.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Rohr, second by Mr. DeGenova. Roll call, please.
Mr. Jones?
No.
Mr. DeGenova?
Yes.
Mr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes.
Motion to approve ordinance 16-66.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Rohr, second by Mr. DeGenova. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. DeGenova?
Yes.
Mr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes.
Motion to suspend the rules requiring three?
I'm sorry, may I interrupt for a second? I've been trying to look it up on my iPad to make sure, because this doesn't happen very often. Am I correct that we've been having motions to suspend the rules, but Councilman Jones has been voting no? Because that makes us have less than, I think we might need to do that, because it would be four, but I think we need five to suspend the rules requiring three readings. That's what I'm looking up, but I realize I've?
Well, where have you been?
Well, I've been looking at it on my iPad, but I was like, oh my gosh, you're getting really, really far ahead. So I'd like to confirm that, but if you want to keep going, I can tell you at the end, we may just have to undo the, nullify those votes, but I can keep looking if you want to keep rolling, I can get you an answer.
Well, it's not going to work, we may as well stop.
Yeah, I don't want to keep looking.
Okay, great. Well, just let me look real quick then, if you don't mind, and I do apologize.
Again, I'm not against the, you know?
I know.
Where we're getting away from our own rules, and I don't know whether Development Department is not passing this information along to the developers, you know, ahead of time? I have no idea, but we all got these things set right in front of us.
Yep.
How do we stay, except a very rare circumstance, a development project, we're going to lose two readings, and we're getting away from our own rules? That's my vote.
I do believe that under our rules of council and parliamentary procedures, we do require five votes to suspend the rules. All parliamentary rules applicable not in conflict with the foregoing rules shall be enforced for the government of council. And it says debate can be closed by the following motions, which are unbeatable, except for the motion on the table, shall require a vote of five for their adoption, and that includes an order limiting debate on a certain subject or closing debate upon the subject at a stated time, when all pending questions shall be put to a vote without debate. So it's kind of, it's not exactly the same way, except I think he's closing the debate before we're supposed to go to another reading, so I think with only four, we can't suspend the rules. It just doesn't happen because we haven't had two auditions in so long.
That's bad timing.
Yeah, because we don't meet again until the 12th of September.
What are you doing? A motion to?
So what we can do? If, I don't want to unparliamentate, do you want to undo your vote?
I can go, I, I'm willing to change. It's more of a stance, and I'm frustrated, so, and I'm?
Let's just take them out to a second reading.
Yeah. That's great, but I don't know, again, my frustration, and this isn't directed at you at all, but I don't know whether we're the, where the, the broken link is in our process here. These are coming to us every two weeks, you know?
We just haven't been as consistent, because in plats and plans, we have, in the past, recent past, approved those on first readings, on plats and plans. On preliminary development plans, it's been different. These are plats and plans, they've already, the subdivision's already been approved, it's fairly, I don't want to say routine, but it's different than a preliminary development plan. That's all, Chris. It was, we did make that distinction, I think, at one point, but we didn't, you know, change the actual rule.
And I do apologize for looking it up and being slow on the draw, they're just going so fast. I will just say this from a parliamentary procedure standpoint, and this is no pressure on Chris either way. If Councilman Jones wanted to reconsider his vote, he has to be the one to make that motion, because he voted the opposite way, or you can take it to a second reading, and we'll just have to mark down that the motions to suspend the rules failed, and the other votes just never happened. Does that make sense, Elaine?
We have one last meeting in September, correct?
One last month.
This is your one this month.
September 12.
Yeah.
The next meeting is September 12.
Can I jump in, not to get, we're in no hurry, except for section eight. Nine and 10, have at it if you want to, if you, if there was one to, not that I'm just, for the sake of time, that would be the only one that matters to us.
I'm not changing anything, so let's stick with.
I think we just take 12 through 17 to a second reading.
Yeah.
Yes.
Just go to another reading, September 12.
Elaine's looking like, okay, what do I do now?
Would it help if I came over and just looked at what you write down? Does this make sure we're on the same page? Or you got it, Elaine?
Just the motion failed under no suspension.
Yes.
Sorry.
So they automatically go to a second reading? And again?
Is there not a meeting on the 22nd?
No.
No.
Okay.
Okay. August, or September 12th is the next one.
Is that recent? That cancellation?
No, staff has not about that.
It's been a month or so.
Yeah, okay. It's not for this project, it's something else.
Okay. Alrighty, then we'll move on to item 18.
Eighteen and nineteen?
They're separate.
They're separate?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Ordinance number 16-69. An ordinance approving a community reinvestment area agreement and school compensation agreement with Cemetery II LLC, Delaware City Schools, and Delaware Area Career Center for investment in real property improvements on parcel number 41922002003006. Emergency clause, that this ordinance is hereby declared to be an emergency measure necessary to provide for the public, peace, safety, health, and welfare of the city, and is necessary to finalize negotiations, and as such will be in full force and effect immediately upon its passage.
Thank you. Mr. Hughes?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council. I apologize now, I have a cold, and I probably sound kind of funny, but I'm going to try to make it through this. What we have before you is a, an ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into community reinvestment area tax abatement and a school compensation agreement with Cemetery II LLC, as well as Delaware Area City Schools and Delaware Area Career Center, for a 60,000 square foot facility to be built at the intersection of Innovation Court and the new Sawmill Parkway. It will be about a $4 million investment. The company Cemetery II LLC, this is a office warehouse speculative building. The company is committing to the creation of 28 new full-time equivalent positions from Target Industries, as discussed before, with a payroll of $1.3 million. The way that this is structured, and this is a very different format for us, but also a format that other communities are using right now to, to remain competitive, but also to award performance on economic development projects. For the first 50, for the first three years of the tax abatement, we're proposing a 50% abatement for those commitment levels, the 28 FTEs and $1.3 million of payroll. For years four through 15, for each additional $225,000 of new payroll created by employers, and again, Target Industry payroll per pages 15 through 17 of our economic development plan, they can qualify for an additional 10% abatement on, in addition to that original 50%. So they can build up to 100% essentially by the end of the 15 years. They can do it quickly, they can do it slowly, depends on how they fill the building. From years six through 15, for every 10% over the original 50% tax abatement, they would then pay $3,000 directly to the schools with a maximum of 15,000, and that's per year, for a maximum of $15,000 per year. If they were to achieve a full 100%, they'd be paying $15,000 per year to the schools. This abatement, if they were to stay at a 50% level throughout the full 15 years of the abatement, the net value of the abatement after the school payments would be $329,000 and $624. That would allow for a return on investment of 102.5%, which is very good. Obviously, the, the structured format of this allowed us to achieve the high return on investment, though. That was very important during the calculation phase of this. We are requesting an emergency. They're already doing site prep work, which is allowed before abatements are done, but they do need to start construction soon.
Any questions for Mr. Hughes? You all totally confused on this?
This is 18, or?
We're working on 18.
18 does not have a, doesn't say anything about an emergency.
Well, I know, but it does if you read your package, they just forgot to write it on here.
Oh, I'm sorry, in the fact sheet, it's probably not in the fact sheet.
It is on the fact sheet, it's not on the agenda itself.
Oh, gosh, yes.
So, but if you read the package, you will see that there is one.
I do apologize, the fact sheet in the pack, it does say 25 jobs. The, the actual legislation is, and the agreements themselves are written for 28. I typed it out there, I just noticed.
Any questions? Any votes? It's all looking good.
Chris, I'm concerned, or?
Chris has a question, I can tell by what I'm looking at his face.
That's always my line. No, I'm okay, this is a community reinvestment, it's?
Yeah, this was approved, I believe, councils came before planning and before city council about a month and a half ago. This is really the, the last piece of the, of the project, which requires the council's action tonight. That's what we would ask for. Yeah, the delay was really caused due to the new format of, of the abatement, since it was a structured abatement. The schools wanted to take their due diligence time, that's allowed to them by higher revised code, which is 45 days. So they did, just before I went on vacation here recently, they did allow us to go, to move forward with this, and they had no changes.
Does an emergency clause require five votes as well, Mr. Hughes?
I believe it does, yes, but I will confirm that.
My move is suspend the rules on 16-69. Second.
I have a motion by Mr. DeGenova, second by Mr. Rohr. Roll call, please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. DeGenova?
Yes.
Mr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes.
I move for the adoption of the emergency clause. Second.
Motion by Mr. DeGenova, second by Mr. Rohr. Roll call, please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. DeGenova?
Yes.
Mr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes.
Move for the adoption of 16-69 as submitted.
Motion by Mr. DeGenova, second by Mr. Rohr. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. DeGenova?
Yes.
Mr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Abstain.
And Mr. Rohr, it does require five for the emergency clause.
Okay, it still passes, because we only need four to pass it despite what it might be looking like.
That is correct.
Okay. And Elaine, if you'll read item nineteen, which is ordinance sixteen dash seventy in the record, please. So what is it?
I have two.
I know.
Ordinance number sixteen dash seventy, an ordinance amending a two thousand and fifteen community reinvestment area agreement and school compensation agreement with Precision Tower Products LLC, Delaware City Schools and Delaware Area Career Center for investment in real property improvements on parcel, on a parcel on Pittsburgh Drive and declaring an emergency. Emergency clause, that this ordinance is hereby declared to be an emergency measure necessary to provide for the public peace, safety, health, and welfare of the city, and is necessary to finalize negotiations, and as such will be in full force and effect immediately upon its passage.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council, I'm back, I never left, actually. So what we have before you is a, an ordinance modifying, an ordinance that we passed in June of last year, fifteen forty-two, and the subsequent, and, and modifying the subsequent CRA agreement and school compensation agreements that were tied to that ordinance. Due to the request of the company, they are, I'll let him explain to a greater degree, but they, they restructured their company, they've renamed their company due to marketing reasons and other reasons that are industry needed, from Precision Tower Products LLC to Skyclimber Fabricating LLC. So that does require us to change all of the documentation for our own records, the county auditor, as well as the state of Ohio. They also have requested that we modify the agreements in such a way that they can begin hiring as of June, July one, which is, that's where we passed, July one, two thousand and sixteen, rather than the original date of January one, two thousand and sixteen. Reason being, their, their company has actually grown more rapidly than what any of us originally anticipated, and they're needing to fulfill orders and hire people now, as well as get some people in, in-house and start training them before the building is actually finalized, as you, and if any of you have already been out on Pittsburgh Drive, I mean, the, the building is well underway, I don't know what the timeline is right now, September? Okay, so they're looking at September completion, so we're not very far off of that anyhow. But it does allow them to get staffed, to get these orders fulfilled, and then once the building is, is, the occupancy permit is completed, they can immediately move employees into it, from the new employees as well, as those of, that have already been operating on, excuse me, out at Park Avenue, four thirty-five Park Avenue.
Excuse me, for clarification, you said to hire them January first of two thousand and sixteen, but you meant seventeen?
No, the, the original was January one, two thousand and seventeen, so they're requesting that to be bumped to July. Oh, gosh, I am so sorry, yes. Yeah, why, why would we be changing that then, right? Move it later.
Okay.
Yes, yeah, you're correct, it was originally January one, two thousand and seventeen, which is generally what happens, you want to start the hiring process with a fresh new year for, to, to make the, the reporting easier, but we'll just have to keep that in mind as we move forward with the reporting processes through the fifteen years of that particular abatement. They'll, they'll later be coming, I'll actually later be coming with a request to amend the, the loan as well at a later date to, to reflect the new name of the company, so.
Did somebody already have that name, is that why you changed it, or?
No, really, it, it really is a marketing and, and changing the scope of the, expanding the scope of the business. Originally, this company was going to focus on the cell tower industry, cellular industry, and that industry tends to be somewhat cyclical in the requirements, so we've really expanded the scope now to make it a full fabricating company that, so we can fabricate a number of components for really any industry throughout Ohio and the Midwest. And we just felt like, because of that, we didn't want to call it Precision Tower Products, we really wanted it to be more of a generic name. That, that really is the extent of it, the ownership's the same, it's, it's, we're just changing the name of that organization to focus more on a bigger scope.
Yes, could you give us your name and address for the record?
Todd King, address is seven zero four eight Bordeaux Court in Dublin, Ohio.
Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. King? What is the wish of council?
Move suspend rules requiring three readings on sixteen seventy.
Second.
Motion by Mr. DeGenova, second by Mr. Rohr. Roll call, please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. DeGenova?
Yes.
Mr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes.
Move adopt emergency clause.
Second.
Motion by Mr. DeGenova, second by Mr. Rohr. Roll call, please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. DeGenova?
Yes.
Mr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes.
Remove for the adoption of sixteen seventy as submitted.
Second.
Motion by Mr. DeGenova, second by Mr. Rohr. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. DeGenova?
Yes.
Mr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Is he gonna have to go through the revolving loan is what, is the other one, or not? When you said we have to change it?
Basically, we're working through some, some details right now. We'll, we'll need to subordinate the loan anyhow, so I'd like to package those requests together, and we'll have to go back through the RLF committee, get a recommendation from the RLF committee to council to do so, to subordinate and change the, the name of record on the documentation. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Item twenty is consideration of ordinance number sixteen dash seventy-one.
Ordinance number sixteen dash seventy-one, an ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into a renewal agreement for the law enforcement support office program.
Good evening, chief.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council. This is a renewal of the agreement between the City of Delaware and the LISO program, or the ten thirty-three program. This is a program that allows us, actually, this is a program that we become part of through the state of Ohio to allow us to access unused, or not unused, but unneeded equipment through the Department of Defense. This is a renewal, same agreement as the previous years. I've also included our current inventory for your review. You can see, prior to the last year, we really haven't picked up maybe one or two pieces of equipment. Also, just to point out, the M-16 rifles at the beginning of the inventory, we're actually in the process of, of getting rid of those rifles, we no longer use them. And we did return the thirty-seven millimeter grenade launcher at the request of President Obama.
Any questions? What is the wish of council on ordinance sixteen dash seventy-one? Anybody?
Is this, well, this is the first reading as well?
Yeah.
Right. This is fine, yeah. Suspend rules on sixteen seventy-one. Second.
Motion by Mr. Jones, second by Mr. Hellinger. Roll call, please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. DeGenova?
Yes.
Mr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes.
Does this need an emergency clause?
No.
Move adoption of sixteen seventy-one.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Jones, second by Mr. Hellinger. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. DeGenova?
Yes.
Mr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. And then Elaine, if you'll read item twenty-one through twenty-three.
Ordinance number sixteen dash seventy-two, an ordinance approving a rezoning for Delaware Housing Corporation from B-three, Community Business District, to R-six, multi-family residential district for London Town Apartments on approximately zero point eight-eight acres, parcel number four-one-nine dash one-two-two dash zero-one dash zero-zero-six dash zero-zero-zero, and located at three hundred Chelsea Street. Ordinance number sixteen dash seventy-three, an ordinance approving an amendment of the comprehensive plan for Delaware Housing Corporation on properties designated as commercial on the future land use map to moderate density for London Town Apartments on approximately zero point eight-eight acres, parcel number four-one-nine dash one-two-two dash zero-one dash zero-zero-six dash zero-zero-zero, and located at three hundred Chelsea Street. Ordinance number sixteen dash seventy-four, an ordinance approving a combined preliminary and final development plan for Delaware Housing Corporation for London Town Apartments on approximately zero point eight-eight acres, parcel number four-one-nine dash one-two-two dash zero-one dash zero-zero-six dash zero-zero-zero, and located at three hundred Chelsea Street.
Thank you. And these are all first reading?
Yes, and the public hearing scheduled for September twelfth, so that the presentation will be at that time.
Yes, okay. Catch your breath, and then if you'll read twenty-four and twenty-five together.
Ordinance number sixteen dash seventy-five, an ordinance approving a final development plan for Pulte Homes for Heatherington Phase Six, consisting of thirty-two single-family lots on approximately nine point zero-two-zero acre zoned R-three PRD, one-family residential district with a planned residential development district, and located on Climber Street, Elbridge Street, and Borgorn Street.
Thank you.
Ordinance number sixteen dash seventy-six, an ordinance approving a final subdivision plan for Pulte Homes for Heatherington Phase Six, consisting of thirty-two single-family lots on approximately nine point zero-two-zero acres zoned R-three PRD, one-family residential district with a planned residential development district, and located on Climber Street, Elbridge Street, and Borgorn Street.
Okay, these are first readings?
These are first readings, so I'm prepared for a presentation, it's up to you if you.
I think we'll do, do you want to hear it tonight, and do you want to hear it next time?
Probably next time, one of the other two.
Yes, okay. Okay. All right. Then I'll move for a motion to go, oh, no, let's do the bottom part, and then we'll go back into executive session. So let's do city manager's report.
Couple of items, obviously, we're gearing up for the Ironman competition, which takes place on the twenty-first. Very excited about this first ever event in the city. We expect, we learned today, twenty-one hundred athletes, and you can expect two to two point five spectators per athlete. That coupled with the eight hundred-plus volunteers that we've registered, that Michelle has registered with the help of Carolyn, we'll have close to five thousand people in town that weekend. So we are making sure that we're gonna put our best, best foot forward. We want the community to look good, we want people to come back and visit, and come back and live here, come back and start a business here. So with that in mind, we'd like to spend a few extra dollars that we put in the budget this year under community promotions, we've got about forty-two hundred dollars left approximately for some additional enhancements, so we wanted to put some stencils, Ironman stencils in some of the roadways, as well as, we want to enhance the flower baskets downtown and a few other things that Jackie is working on, so.
Are we gonna enhance them, or are we gonna hang them?
We're gonna hang them.
Thank you, okay.
Yes, yeah, these should be hanging baskets at key, at the key intersections. We really want to, as I say, make the community look really, really look nice that weekend. It's leading up, obviously, four weeks later is the fair, which we would be getting ready for anyway, in terms of, you know, getting things looking nice. So I was hoping council would be okay with, with that, that's really what we had, one of the things we had talked about when we did that community promotions fund, was using those dollars to promote the community, and that was one way of doing that, so. Second item I have is the, we want to get a finance committee meeting set. I'll have Michelle get some dates out, too. She already sent some dates out?
She's given us the dates.
Did she?
I thought I could do twenty-nine, thirty, thirty-one, whatever it's.
To the end of the month?
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll get one set up on that. Moving Delaware forward, we presented it first Friday on Friday night, had a very, very good turnout. It was a good evening all around, considering the fact that we had to close, we couldn't close the South Block due to the oil spill on twenty-three. And that's really a good segue into my commendation for all of our folks, the emergency service personnel, our police department, our public works department, and everybody else who was involved in that, not only that accident, but that Saturday morning about five o'clock, there was a truck headed northbound on twenty-three right after forty-two that turned over, and that caused us having to close, close twenty-three north for a while, so they were at it all weekend long, and did a great job, excellent teamwork. And things are pretty much chief, both chiefs are looking at, pretty much back to, to order at this point, but my hats off to, to them and everybody else who was involved in helping with that. That actually caused us, as I said, not to be able to do the first Friday as we had envisioned, but it went off, I thought, really well, we had a really good turnout. Two more, moving Delaware forward presentations, one to the Cheshire Crossing Homeowners Association later this month on the twenty-third, and then one the following day to Willowbrook at the Centrum on twenty-three. We've already presented at the first Willowbrook on, at, on William Street, so this will be our second presentation to Willowbrook. And we will not be meeting, as everybody knows, until the twelfth, so that's all I have, thank you.
Council comments, Mr. Jones?
I have a few, first I'll start with going back to, is it, Mr. Butler's still here, so I just wanted to let him know that, Mr. Butler, I spoke the day before I left from Minnesota, and I just got back, and to let him know that I did send out some information from our conversation to council while I was gone, this is the first time I've seen anybody, so I'll follow up with them and you as well, but I appreciate you sticking around, he had a chance to say that earlier, so. I apologize for getting upset earlier.
That's okay.
I don't think that guy likes me anymore. Ruined a couple monies in a row for him, not on purpose. But I'll just point out to everybody that just, that Charter Review Commission addressed that issue too, and they didn't want to change that either, so, and obviously, it tells me it's important to the public that we, that we do, do these two readings and things like that, so. Anyhow. Last thing, comprehensive plan.
Yeah, that, we had talked about getting that updated, starting the updating work this year, which we're doing, it's probably gonna start in earnest in two thousand and eighteen, more of the planning work is gonna begin in two thousand and seventeen. I'll be putting something into my budget request that will be going to you in November, talking about how we do that, whether we budget over a couple of years.
I'm curious, is that, how's that put together? Is that just through development, is it just internally through staff? Is there some stuff through the community?
No, it's actually, it's a very comprehensive project, which will require the community. We did it, lasted in two thousand and three, and a lot of what we see before us today, the development projects are, are kind of an outgrowth of that plan, but it does need updating.
I served on that committee, and there were like thirty-five people involved in that.
One reason I ask, it's just something that I saw on the plans tonight, and just coming back from something I was at last week, is, you know, I'd like to, to point, see what the comprehensive plan, less retention ponds, maybe a little bit more purpose concrete, you know, those retention ponds cause mosquitoes, and I mean, there's just, there's ways to get around some of the steps, so, you know, when we get to the comprehensive plan, so. I'm just curious what the status was, so, that's all I have.
Okay. Mr. DeGenova?
Yes, I had the finance committee meeting, and, and there was only one day I couldn't make it, it was like the eighteenth, but I'm available, and I think we're waiting for Kent to get back and decide on that. Update Ted on the Plaza Memorial, Veterans Memorial, the lighting and the Air Force thing, has that been ordered? People have been asking me about that, it's been about six weeks.
I, I was just out there last week, and I know the plaques have not been changed out yet, so I'll get with the contractor and find out what date he's looking at. Originally, I think it was the end of July, they're supposed to be done, so.
And then they were gonna add two more lights, one in the front and the back of the Eternal Flame?
Yeah, I think they were gonna retry to reposition those lights, but I'll, I'll check with them on that also.
Just checking, see. Thank you. And then Pennsylvania Avenue, the construction there, I don't see Bill here. Is it gonna be done for the fair?
It's an ODOT project, and the contractor has until October, sometime in October. So we're, we're making contingency plans, we think we, it's, it'll be manageable.
Okay, I know they got the curb and gutters in, and they got to lay the road yet, but, weather permitting, I guess.
They said they were gonna try, but it's for the October.
Okay. That's all I have.
Mr. Rohr? Mr. Hellinger?
I'm speechless.
You are?
Yes.
Wow. Back to talking about the Ironman, in talking to Kent Hammond, who is our race director from New York, this Ironman here in Delaware will leave a two point three million dollar impact. That's phenomenal. So I hope that the rest of you, council will support spending a little money to spruce us up. Are we all in favor?
Almost Tom turns in the paperwork.
Yeah, Tom, can you turn the paperwork, please?
We'll get the receipts.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Oh, yeah.
That's good news.
And then on August twelfth, I want to do a Ralph Martin Day. Ralph Martin is our shoemaker here in town, and he's actually retiring. Ralph Martin is now eighty-five years old, and so what I would like to, I'm gonna go there and do a proclamation, Lee, what time did I say I was going?
Ten.
Ten o'clock, thank you. And I don't want Ralph to have to leave his business, he's getting up there in age, and he's having some problems, but if people could stop by and give him a hug and give him cards, let's face it, he's our last of his generation, he's the last one we have. So I just think he's a great man, he's been a great attribution to our community, and if you could all do that, I would greatly appreciate it. It's August twelfth, it's Friday.
It's ten.
Ten o'clock will be the proclamation, but you could stop by any time and wish him well, and I just thought that would be nice.
Well, Mr. Martin, my son had leg per pheas disease, and for, I think he was first grade, and for four years, he made his leg braces and never charged me a nickel.
Wow.
And so he's kind of like a stepfather to us, and he's done a real good job, and you don't see the old shoe cobblers around anymore.
And then Jackie, the bricks out at the veterans, did you tell me that those are going to be, veterans' plots, that those are going to be fixed the week of the fair, because they'll be here anyways? Okay, because I've had a few people ask me, and I couldn't remember.
They just see everybody that is requesting some sort of correction, needs to get in touch with Michelle.
Okay, all right.
What bricks, was there some damage in there?
Well, no, they're just, some are placed wrong, some are spelled wrong.
Oh, okay.
So, things like that.
If you have one that has a problem with it, just let Michelle know.
Okay, and with that, I'll look for a motion to go into executive session. Anyone?
To go into executive session.
Can I have a motion?
Motion to enter executive session, present out to ORC 121.22G3.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Rohr, and a second by Mr. Jones. Roll call, please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. DeGenova?
Yes.
Mr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes.
Do you want to do it in here, or do you want to go back and stay here?
We can stay here, and let's take a five-minute break. Okay?